Six thirty, we'll open the meeting. We do have a need to amend the agenda to add into the planning commission's letter to PUC. Also, we're discussing solar sighting language and the adoption process. And then we have to consider approval of the following permits. Second-class alcohol and tobacco license for heats and first-class and third-class alcohol license for the Hilltop LLC.
You just have to adjourn select or recess.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of May seventeenth? There was a lot going on in that meeting. I know. Well, this, so when Lisa Wright explained that the applicant can, or right, wrong thing. Ms. Wright explained that the status of the building is in disrepair and is good for community functions. Is that what she told us? That sounds contrary.
Well, they have, they do, they already have community functions going in.
Yeah.
Okay, I just was making sure it's what she said, just 'cause.
Demonstration.
Yep, I couldn't remember.
And the pavilion too.
Okay.
That's concrete's been poured this week, actually.
The other one was Jim Rodamacher inquired if there was any way of convincing the state, and Sheriff Malley stated the request was made and denied. We just said that we had asked, right? That was when I mentioned to him that we.
I think, I think what he was trying to get is if, if the state could convince us or you guys that it was a good idea, not them.
Okay, I thought it was when he, he was asking if the state would re, like, kind of come, possibly come back and.
Right, and tell us why.
Yeah.
The idea was better.
Right, okay.
But it's minor.
Yeah. Did anybody else have anything? Okay. All right, town manager report.
Okay, there's a report in here that Jen gave me for REC. I don't need to read it if you, if you don't, if you guys don't need it, it's just, I, it's pretty lengthy too, so, I can if you want. So, so we've received a permit from V-Trans to replace and repair the existing asphalt sidewalks along Route Seven from the Catholic Church to the Norley intersection of Ark Street. During the next few weeks, the Highway Department will be removing the existing sidewalk and prepping the base for installation of new asphalt sidewalks. The gearbox that was approved for use ARPA money on has been installed in the micro screener at their wastewater treatment plant. Sean and Tyler have been spring cleaning around the wastewater plant. They've also been brush cutting around the wells and the pump stations. Outer Creek is still performing property inspections for the lead and copper survey. We've been assisting them with locating, on marking curb stops. The new dock has been installed at the pond at the REC park. Highway's been performing shoulder work and culvert replacement on Fire Hill Road. And we have received eighteen thousand dollars from the V-Trans Grants and Aid Program for fiscal year twenty-four, so that will start July one. This is the annual grant that funds stormwater runoff mitigation on our gravel roads. After researching the possibility of outsourcing payroll, the consensus is that we would currently prefer to keep it in-house. The cost benefit hasn't, we decided, hasn't been significant enough to make the change. And we had some other issues too with the union, so we might revisit it in the future, but.
So I have a question on that. We voted to do that, so why is something we voted on to do now being?
Because the union's not letting us do it. Remember, we talked about it last.
I missed that part in that discussion.
I thought, when are we going to continue discussing that in executive?
Yeah.
We are having executives.
Yes.
We are, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't remember that actually ending up that way.
The Vermont Municipal Retirement.
Right.
It would take them two months to build, but they need to process it.
Also, they don't have the ability.
It did change a bit.
They don't have the ability to do the.
That's different, yeah. That one company, or did you check both?
Just the one, the one that we, the board approved, so.
Well, no, we didn't approve one, we approved what you suggested, so we had two.
Yeah, it was ADP, so, yeah. Yeah, we can follow up with the other one too, but we can talk about it later.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
And then Mark had asked me to follow up on tire, where tires were placed on the back hole, and just for information, the back hole's a 2016 JCB that's accumulated three thousand thirteen work hours, and this was the first time the tires have been replaced since its date of purchase, so we got seven years out of them. And we've been awarded a passive grant of fifty-five hundred dollars, and I realize I didn't type the rest of the sentence. It's for safety equipment at the highway garage, so it wasn't free to spend.
What was it for again?
They do safety grants for stuff if we need, like, roll-up signs, or I can't remember what Chad had, he had a list of a few things on it, so, and it's a hundred percent, so, you know, whatever, we get up to fifty-five hundred dollars, a hundred percent grant funded, so. And then just a couple of things, just that I did this week. Alicia and I attended the legislative breakfast with the governor at South Station on Monday morning, and that was pretty informative.
Yeah.
And I attended the Preservation Trust Conference yesterday in Stratford, which was, like, the village farm was there actually, and they were, they were represented there, well, which was nice, but it was good, you know, there's, there's a lot of funding out there for those, these kinds of historic projects, and it's cool to see their successes, so. And, yeah, so, that's all I have tonight, I guess.
All right, thanks. Any select board member remarks?
But, money that's, safety money that's going to, for the Highway Department, why couldn't you use that to pay for the tires for the, for the loader, 'cause.
It only covers.
It'd be safer to have them new tires than it would be to run.
Yeah, it only covers certain things, like, we could get, like, we could get, like, the jack stands for, like, if the bodies are up on the trucks or stuff like that, it's, it's pretty limited to what it is, they won't fund tires for us. Yeah. Oh, I know another thing I just want to tell you, I did, Ann, Ann had printed this off, the Internal Financial Controls Checklist for municipalities, and I think I had it in my notes there, if you guys could just look at it and actually.
Yeah.
Do the survey and get it back to us, it's, it's good for auditing too, so.
Okay. I'm gonna put that aside, or I'll forget.
Mark? Kevin Blow from the Planning Commission asked me to put an invitation out to any select board members that would like to attend their meeting next, it's next Thursday, the fifteenth, it's not the regular day, the fifteenth day that.
It's the fifteenth. Oh, we.
Somebody didn't change the calendar.
But if you turn behind you.
Like ten of them in here.
Anyway, I think it's fifteen.
It's the fifteenth, yeah, it said it in their minutes that I wrote today.
So the, the solar developer involved with Outback Acres is gonna do the presentation via Zoom for the Planning Commission, so he wanted to extend the invitation if anybody wanted to go from the select board. Yeah.
That's the fifteenth here?
Yes. And then it is seven o'clock, and I'm sure they'll do it first after they get started.
Does anyone else have anything? Any public comment? I thought, so nobody from the Planning Commission's planning on coming? I'm surprised.
He didn't mention it.
Okay. All right, 'cause that's our first agenda item, so Planning Commission letter to PUC, but I guess we have nothing to, I thought they were gonna be here with the letter, no?
I haven't seen a letter.
Okay, all right.
I, I sent a letter, you know, when we did the motion to intervene.
Right.
That basically, should know, I just looked at it today, man, trying to remember what's on it, were the issues that we brought up at the site visit.
Yeah.
So, that's already been filed, and that's what, you know, that's what gave us the party status for the motion to intervene. I did see today, actually, that they've extended the schedule for, for public input too, so it's, I can't remember the date now, I'd have to look it up, but it was, it was extended to, like, July something.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I do believe they're planning on sending their own letter, that's, right? We're at that meeting.
Kind of have that feeling, but I didn't see it.
All right, well, then I guess.
Well, if they're, if, if they're, what, what if they're coming in a week, they're probably holding off until they've actually heard the presentation.
That's probably what they're doing, yeah.
I would guess.
All right, well, then, kind of an addendum to that, I guess, is solar sighting language that we had asked them to write up that I gave you.
No, I put it back.
Did you give it back to me?
I gave it back.
Oh, boy, there it goes.
Dave, you should have, I put it on front of your thing, on the table tonight.
So, and this is just, has everybody had a chance to read it, solar sighting language that the Planning Commission came up with? I'll just read it, and it's just something, I mean, this is gonna be a process anyways of getting into the town plans, this is just kind of, just the beginning of the conversation, but, so, this again, written by the, Mike Norris, actually, of the Planning Commission. Ground-mounted solar arrays in excess of one hundred and fifty kilowatts must demonstrate a local public need that outweighs adverse impacts to local residents. The public benefit must be documented from municipal support of new solar facilities located within or which may otherwise affect Pittsburgh. Facility development must benefit town of Pittsburgh and state residents, businesses, and property owners in direct proportion to the impacts of the proposed development. In addition to the above conditions, projects greater than one hundred and fifty kilowatts are subject to conditional approval from both Planning Commission and Select Board. So that's just something for, I guess, everyone to think about as we move forward today. So.
Well, I wonder why they're picking on just bigger than one fifty, why isn't it all? I mean, there's, you know, and it's very vague.
Well, some are intrusive than others.
They had, they had some reasoning.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I don't remember what it was, can you?
I mean, just the bigger ones are more intrusive, I mean, that's the ones that usually get the most.
Is there a size? Was that the acreage coverage or something they went with?
There was, and I can't remember.
Acre, is that what that equal? I don't know.
Isn't it one fifty, like, three acres?
They have a small, like, one fifty kilowatts is small.
It's pretty small.
So.
I'd rather have one big one in town than fifty little ones myself.
I know, I, like I said, I thought they were gonna be here tonight.
I don't know where it is.
Discuss where they were coming from with this, but.
I did give guys all a copy of the statute too for how to adopt this and if we're considering putting it in the town plan.
Right.
Which I think would be good.
Yeah.
And maybe do the, the energy one that was done back in, like, twenty twenty, maybe.
Was it that only in twenty twenty?
It was a, I think it was a standalone that was done after, the town plan went through without it, and then they did the standalone afterwards.
Okay.
But this, they, they passed this, right, to be amended in the town plan, it's come to us, that's what the Planning Commission did.
What I just read?
Yeah.
Did they actually vote on it?
Yeah, they did.
I guess so.
Yeah, they did.
So, right, so that's when it comes to us.
That's why it's sitting with us, 'cause they voted on it, and that's.
Right, okay.
Didn't Pittsburgh, I think we had that windmill proposal over on the West Mountains there of Pittsburgh, didn't they put in, didn't we come up with some new regulation to kind of combat that Hubbardton?
Oh, the one over at Grandpa's Knob?
Right, that was a big, big deal.
I don't think we did anything, it just.
I thought we.
It didn't go.
No, no, there's, I think there's height restrictions on high elevations.
That wasn't done at that time though, right?
No, not that time, that was already in there, that was already in there, yeah, 'cause that was in there back when we redid the town plan, we put that stuff in.
I guess the energy plan, we did, if I remember right, there was, they wanted us to put this huge energy plan in the town plan, which at that time the Planning Commission wasn't in favor of going through all, the state wanted to write in there.
Right.
So, after they were done with the town plan, then they did the piggyback, and it's, it's very basic, just, you know, site coverage by plants, money for the decommissioning, those are a couple of things that are in it, it's in, you've got it, right?
The energy plan, yeah.
But Dave thought if we were gonna do this language, that that energy plan should be part of it for the one amendment, so.
Did you wanna consider doing something with the, with the solar thing, like, the town prefers, like, ground fields, gravel pits?
That's why, I know, I would like to see a little bit more specifics, so.
And a thing, and I'll just.
Because I think, you know, I think where we're going, I don't wanna speak for everyone else, it's not anti-solar, it's just, again, having preferred sites, whether it makes more sense or less.
From what they were talking about, you were there with me at the meeting.
Yeah.
They were gonna work on this farther, but they wanted to start the process with vague language, so at least they had status.
Yep.
And I think that was all about, so they had to say.
Right, okay.
That was all it was about, and I think what they planned on doing was spending more time on this.
Yeah.
So, at least for the new town plan, or, but they wanted to get the process started with some language so they have status, 'cause if you don't have language in there, then there's no status.
Right, okay.
Do you, would you entertain, like, maybe researching some other towns with their language, just so they have it for reference to maybe see what.
This is, I think, they pulled it off of.
Yeah.
Dave would.
Love that idea.
League of City in town, would they have any information that would be helpful?
The RPC would, Regional Planning Commission would be helpful with that, I, I, no, their, their plan is extensive, but you gotta remember, they gotta cover it county-wide, so.
Twenty-seven towns.
Yeah.
It's like forty pages, yeah.
Well, I mean, we did the same thing in the other town I was talking, so, you know, we're taking it and actually, like, refining it to, within the community, so.
That was quite a, that's why we went to that, at that time, that, because it was extremely intrusive.
I can check with the league and see if there's something there, but that, it might be out of their, out of their league, actually. But let me, I mean, if you, if you don't mind, I mean, I can certainly, you know, just pull some and see what other towns have done, so.
I think that's a good idea, like I said, we're starting, just starting to fall rolling, so, yeah, let's get more information and more ideas.
So you want a table doing anything with this till?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I do. Does anybody else have, anybody in, wanna say anything about solar before we move on? Okay, that'll be an ongoing conversation, so, okay. Well, we'll skip around, due to audience members, so if we wanted to discuss to start the loader purchase conversation.
Oh, sure, we are skipping around. So, in your packets, there's, there are three proposals for, for new loader. I did have a sheet that had, like, what we've had to do.
Oh.
Thanks, Mark.
Twenty-two thousand we've spent on it.
So it shows, like, what work has been done to it and everything, and it's time for a new one, so. Chad had gotten quotes from, from G Stone Commercial and Milton Cat and, John Deere. So, yeah, they're all in front of you guys. I mean, obviously, it's nice to have service, you know, right up the road, as we know, we just went through with a truck that getting it towed to Jericho all the time is, takes a lot of time away from the guys and, so. But we went up and actually looked at the Dusan too. Chad ran it for a while, he really liked it.
Okay.
But, you know, the, so, but they're all here, I mean, that's, I don't know a ton about the equipment, I do just know that service is a big thing, and when the equipment's down, we get less work done, so.
Right.
How old is yours? How old is it?
Oh, five?
I think I had it on there, didn't I?
It's oh five, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty old.
I think, I think that's right, I think there's an oh five. You don't know what the hours are on it.
Five forty-four J, two thousand oh five.
I don't think I have the hours still. Well, the hours might not even be accurate, it's hard to tell.
It might be on one of the trade-in sheets, I don't know.
I don't see it listed anywhere without.
Yeah, I might not have it here, I'd have to look them up. So the trade, the trade-in value for the Dusan is fifty thousand too, so, there was an email, shit, my stuff's all out of order here.
Yeah.
John Deere's price comes in the lowest, I guess, doesn't it?
Well, I don't think so.
Yeah, by a little.
Is it?
I think the Dusan was the lowest I've ever traded.
So can I ask you a question about the Dusan?
You can.
Okay, so, I know, and I had done some of my own math, and it looked like that, what did come in under, but then, there's, like, additional attachment products, are those necessary, like, I don't, I mean, I don't know anything about this equipment, so.
I believe it was just requested by Chad.
Okay.
He was, yeah, he was looking for the three-yard bucket on the front end, just a coupler stuff, we'd have to get that anyway.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if this was, like, so, extra than what the price was, but maybe already in the quotes for the other two, is what I was trying to figure out.
So I didn't build that, that's actually Jamie McCray that's the seller for that.
Okay.
Typically, they come bare.
Okay.
And then you add your bucket, you either do a pin-on bucket or a coupler with a bucket, and there's a few different buckets that you can get.
Okay.
So it just depends on what you're doing, what you're using it for, all that stuff.
What you want, you want the quick disconnect, that's what you want.
Yeah, I believe that's in there, the couplers.
We have both.
Yeah.
We've got three of them loaders up in there.
Especially if you're changing out buckets and stuff, you gotta.
And you could hook onto your, whatever, forks or many of things.
Yep. And back to the service thing, right up the road, we have two service trucks full-time on the road, and that is one thing that everybody has said, is that they can't believe in the service that they get.
Okay.
We're always, every day, we're looking at our computers, looking to make sure there's no codes on any of the machines, if there is, we're on the phone, we're contacting whoever, you know, making sure everything's okay, but that's one thing that a lot of our customers have commented on is the service.
Volvo, you don't have a price on Volvo, but Volvo are quite popular in some areas, I don't know where they're sold, here in Vermont, I hadn't looked for it, but.
Yeah.
I see quite a lot of Volvo equipment, Volvo and Caterpillar are probably the.
Well, Cat, I mean, Cat has the big market share, they've been around for a long time.
I see this stuff where I deliver lumber, and there's a pile of Volvo that have showed up in the last ten years.
Well, A. Johnson has a pile of orange stuff up there.
Well, they got everything up there. I think they're about like us, they go to auctions and buy any damn thing.
They bought quite a few new machines from us, they actually just bought another new loader from us, and they've been very, very happy with everything.
I think Jamie told me, there are a couple municipalities, there's, like, the town of Wells, I think, is using Dusan, and there was one other one he had mentioned, I can't remember now.
Don't call it, down that way.
Rupert?
No, it wasn't Rupert.
It was kind of nice walking through the shop and not seeing a single one tore apart in there either, there was, there was something in there, but it wasn't a Dusan.
You know, I'm not gonna say they don't break down, everything breaks down, but we, knock on wood, we haven't had, you know, a lot of them broke down for any length of time, so.
You said you, you said you had two Tex on the road, the two separate trucks?
Yeah.
What kind of area are you covering with those two guys?
All over Vermont.
Just Vermont?
That's all we're selling, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dusan hasn't been, how many, how old are they, they're relatively new company.
Yeah, I mean, they've been around a little bit, but not as long as Cat and Deere.
No, they're not one of the old standboys.
They, no, they, but they have been proven, I mean, they've been around long enough.
You're not belting your word there.
People, people have really liked them, they're very smooth machine, you know, they're not slow, they're not jerky fast either, but they're, they're a nice, smooth, well-operating machine.
Now, where are they made?
Now, you're testing me, I don't sell those, I sell the trucks, so.
They're foreign.
Yeah, they're.
You're correct.
Well, I assumed by the name they were, they were foreign, well, no, I'm just, you know, I realize, you know, Caterpillar, their parts are made all over the world too, but still.
Yeah, they're Koreans.
Korean, okay.
They come into Georgia, and I guess final assembly and stuff like that, you know, on the bigger machines, it's put together down there, and then they come up here, so.
Well, what's the warranty on those?
I'm not gonna talk about that because I don't know that. Like I said, I sell the trucks, I'm actually here for a whole different reason, you know, it just happened to be.
Oh.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I see the Ford, so I'm thinking you're not the commercial side.
No, I am, but I sell the trucks, actually.
Oh.
I'm the commercial truck manager, but.
They are made in Korea.
Yeah.
That's what Google says.
There you go.
North or south?
They are Google. Any part of it, I've already erased it, so, I'm guessing south.
Yeah. They do have, they have a good warranty, I mean, it's very comparable to any of the others, and there's no smoke and mirrors with it, and you can get extended warranties.
I want to be been a Dusan dealer up there.
Yeah, those will be my question. This is our third year?
Third year.
Yeah, I think three or four I've seen them sitting there, yeah.
Yeah.
You folks probably brought them into Vermont, I would, would go to guess.
Yeah, we did, and we were one of the top ten dealers in the country our first year, and we've, we've sold a pile of them the few years that we have sold them, so, so, they've been a great product, they really have, and there's a lot of big companies that are actually buying from us for that. It's more they never leave Cat or Deere or anything, so, it's been good.
Oh, I'm sitting there. These machines are all pretty much comparable, I believe.
Yeah, I believe so, I didn't see the other quotes, but I, I would.
I believe they all got a three-yard bucket on them, I.
Yeah, those are priced into.
Yeah, that's kind of the standard.
So, well, that is an add-on on that.
So, you guys did see the, the email from Jamie to Chad, where it says the total after trade is a hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-six.
Does that include?
And that's fully equipped, correct?
That comes with, we'll let her equip a three-ton additional counterweight, blah, 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 let's see, quick coupler and three-yard bucket.
Okay, but it's included.
So it says MSRP, then it has the town of Pittsburgh sale with the trade-in, which Jamie came down and looked at last week, I believe, and that's the price.
Versus this one?
Yeah.
Go by the email one?
Go by the email.
Yes.
Just wanted to check.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're different.
I was confused, yeah, I was confused at first.
One quick question, you might know the answer, is these quick disconnects, connects, are they interchangeable between machines, or the fact that you have got one kind of a machine now and two or three attachments, will that fit right onto the next machine, or are there some difference between the different machines?
There is difference between them.
So you have to make some alterations to use.
Some for other equipment.
For other attachments.
It, that depends on what it is, pin size, all that stuff, it might work, I'm not gonna say it won't, but there, there is some different ways and configurations and pin sizes and all that.
Like, we have a John Deere, well, we've got two or three different things that hook onto it, whether or not they will slide right into any other machine, that's what I was trying to find out, but.
Yeah, that would be something that we'd have to come down and measure, just check out pin size and all that stuff.
I, I don't know what.
And just 'cause, you know, if you're comparing to another new John Deere, that doesn't mean that that John Deere is gonna be able to just slide right into any of the other stuff.
They not.
If they, stuff changes, all.
I've got a question.
So we just bought this new mower that goes on the front of our loader, is it gonna slide right into this, or are we gonna have to spend money to adapt it?
Probably.
I just told him, this is a very good question.
We might have to change the connects on it, I really don't know, we can ask them.
I mean, I think that's something, I mean, if it's a couple hundred bucks, that's one thing, but you know it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a few thousand probably if we've got a change.
It's hard saying without actually taking the measurements.
Measurements, right, I know.
Probably a phone call somewhere, somebody oughta know that.
They're gonna need to know pin sizes and everything too. That's, I mean, just from being around it, the 10 years that I have been, that's my parts guy's first question, what's your pin size?
Wait and find out.
I don't, so the quotes are good until the 23rd, right? And so we meet again before then. Just wanna find out those questions.
Yeah, I'd, I'd kinda like to know.
Well, yeah, yeah, I want, I don't like that last truck where we had to get a different whatever. We don't need to do that again.
Is, is that stuff something that if I sent Jamie down tomorrow, he could come down, take a look, get the measurements we need?
I'll just call him tomorrow, Andy.
Well, do we have?
Chad and I'll give him a call tomorrow and we'll just.
Okay.
That's fine.
Do we have that mower yet? Has that been delivered?
I don't know, David. Have to look.
Well, we mowed, we mowed today, so maybe it did come. I'd have to look.
I'm guessing they didn't mow with a scythe, so. I don't think they were out there with a push mower, so.
The old one doesn't work very well.
But I guess that's something I would like to know before I, you know.
Why is there that kinda money?
Yeah, before we end up with another thing like with this last truck.
Well, we've got at least three different attachments. I know. We got a broom, we got that mower, we got a fork, we got a bucket.
I don't know if the broom goes on a loader.
I don't know if they want loaders.
Broom goes on a tractor. I don't think you'd want that little broom on a big loader. I don't think you'd be able to see it.
No.
If you hit something, you wouldn't even know it.
You may be right.
I think that, I think that goes on a tractor, I think. Chad's not here, but.
This is branching off, but same subject. Have we got our answers on that truck that we originally ordered yet in the actual communication? We were supposed to find out.
Yeah, we were.
I don't know what you guys are gonna do about it. I mean, the truck was sold to another town and.
No, 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 no. We were told what happened to the truck.
Yep.
And it didn't happen to that truck.
Didn't happen to it.
So, so we need to find out why we had incorrect information.
Of course, I wasn't here when all this happened, so I'm trying to put the pieces together. That the first truck didn't fall off anything. It did get in an accident, so this is what I'm hearing from the two, the two companies that were involved with it, that the truck got in an accident. And that someone might've been a little impatient and not getting a truck quick enough, and that's how the other one came here.
That's.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm being told.
Not what we were.
Not what we were told.
I, I can try to put emails together, but it's, it's pretty vague.
We were told in shipment it was in a.
It was total.
Total.
Yeah, that is what was told to Chad.
It was unrepairable.
I think we need to find out what happened so that we know who we're gonna listen to next time or not.
Just don't buy an international next time. We'll be okay.
But it's really not the.
How I know that was gonna, it's gonna be a noise from over there.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we'll ever solve that riddle, Mark, to be honest with you, 'cause someone else was here at the time and, well.
I think we need to get from Chad where that came from. We need to clear this up. Because we were told one thing very clearly, and the decision was made based off inaccurate information.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think we do have to have an answer, whether Chad is ready for, to answer us next time, or if we need to chase someone down, I'll chase them down. But we, we weren't given correct information on that truck, and I don't think that's very fair.
I goffed or something, dude. Yes, it did.
Yeah. Well, the truck was completely built. I think that was whatever the urgency was, was put to rest when it.
It was when they told us ours was totaled. They weren't getting one for a year. So I think we need to, I, I really wanna find out what this chain of communication was, 'cause we were told the wrong information, and we made a decision based on that. So.
I'll see what I can do to get that.
Thank you.
We've tried, Chad and I have tried this already, and it's sort of. Well, no, but let's choose your adventure kinda thing.
That's what Chad told us, so he had someone tell him. Let's just find out what it is, we get this straight.
All right, does anybody?
Is it Clark's? Can I ask that?
It was Clark's on Fairfield's. So the, the truck was an international, the one that we have now, that, so the first truck was ordered from Clark's.
No, the first truck was ordered from Fairfield's.
Fairfield.
Okay. We did not order it from Clark's. That was the.
That's where it's getting into a.
Fairfield is where it got screwed up.
And that's where, so something happened with the truck along the way. Nobody, I don't know, I wasn't here. And they had this sort of ready-to-go truck that had all the accessories and everything on it. And that's, that's what the town picked up in the hand, so.
And it doesn't have one either?
Well, it, it does now, but it was having, it had issues. We'd spent on the shop, we're not spending on the road.
We ordered the truck. We were told that it was totaled in transportation coming here, and it wouldn't be able to get another one for a year. So we had to make a decision on one that was available, and we did, because we had to have something for the snow season.
And who did you buy that one from?
Clark's. So, yeah, I think the, the truck would've come from Clark. The accessories would've come from Fairfield.
No, but because I remember when we ordered this thing, it all, at least, everything is from Fairfield, which I found to be very strange. Because any, I mean, I've only been on here, I'm going on five years, but every other thing we've bought, you bought a truck from Kenworth, you bought a body from whomever.
Viking.
Viking or whoever. This one, it was a packaged truck that we bought from Fairfield.
This was the second one, yeah.
No, no, the first one. The first one was a packaged truck from Fairfield.
I thought the first one was purchased from Clark and was shipped to Fairfield for.
No, I don't believe so.
I, I thought that's what I understood.
I don't think so, no, because I found it strange at the time that we were buying a whole package.
Because Clark's the one that, when I talked to them a cup, before we picked the truck up, said, oh, by the way, your first truck's here. I'm like, what? And so that was at Clark's.
No, but, no, but we, that truck may have been at Clark's, but we bought the whole thing from Fairfield.
Right.
So I'm sure the truck came into Clark, but it was supposed to go to Fairfield, get set up. We bought everything from Fairfield, the truck and the body, everything, as a complete unit, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, we can go back and find it, but that's how I remember it. Because I thought it was weird, so that's why it sticks in my mind.
I have, like Chad brought me in a folder from Clark for the original truck purchase. I can, I'll grab that stuff and we'll see what we can do.
Didn't have trouble with the body. Put on the second truck, went right to the.
There's a whole bunch of.
Two loads.
Sam was it, right?
It was all.
Started off in wrong color.
You're smiling away.
Yeah, no, it does sound odd. Fairfield doesn't usually sell trucks, and if they do, they're usually owned by a dealer. You know, if they put together a demo or something like that, it'll still be sold to you by the dealer, because that's who has to transfer the MSO and actually legally sell it.
So I think it has something to do with like, 'cause is it Allegiance that owns like all of these companies?
So that's what I was getting at, is that if, if that's who you purchased it from, go right to the top. Because you won't get anywhere with any, like Jamie or Clark's, that you gotta go right to the.
Yeah. Clark's was good with it last time. I mean, it's, the truck's still running, so. It's almost that trend since I've been here.
All right, so Dave will get us questions about the loader and we'll revisit it at the next meeting?
I think so.
Correct. All right, uh, fuel bid results.
So we have those in front of you and made a nice spreadsheet that shows the prices. As you see in the notes, you know, the, the contract terms are all over the place because of this, you know, the S5 legislation that nobody wanted to go longer than two years on it. So, uh, it looks like a couple of things to consider, like Suburban showed the lowest price for propane, but to swap tanks out, it's gonna cost $400, 'cause they won't use someone else's tanks. And that's a one-year contract only. Procter Gas was the next one with, you know, $1.799 for two years.
Now, are we with Procter Gas now?
We're with Procter right now.
So there'd be no tank switching?
Tank change.
Okay.
As far as heating oil, Champlain Valley, well, you see the on-road, the off-road, Champlain and Marcell's are the same. The heating for Champlain is, is five cents cheaper. Um, that's for a one-year contract, and Marcell's did say that they could serve, be our service, service our boilers and everything too. Um, 'cause right now we don't really have anybody that's doing any service work for us.
Was Marcell's three?
Excuse me?
They're willing to go three years? It doesn't say.
No, he did a one. He did one.
He did one.
Yeah. But he basically, it's basically the same as Champlain except for the heating oil.
But he does have a cap of 3.75.
He did a cap on his that was better, and I know that we weren't, that wasn't happening here this past year, so.
Right.
Cap's not a bad thing.
Cap is not a bad thing.
I didn't, no.
Especially when you gotta open bottom end.
Yeah.
That's about.
Well, diesel jumped what? 29 to 10, 20 cents, 30 cents today in Middlebury.
Again, it'd be nice to have someone local that can service stuff that we can call and say, hey, we have a problem, and they're here today. I think, I think there's a, there's a value to that. And I would, I would recommend Procter Gas for propane and Marcell's for our fuel and servicing.
I'll make a motion.
I, I just have a question, sorry. Um, so, but also, 'cause, um, Champlain lists, like, I mean, it's all gonna be for the same locations, right? Like a library, like Marcel will do.
Well, the library is in our contract, but they pay their own.
Right, but I just, I just, okay, I just wanna make sure, 'cause Champlain specifically mentions the library being, okay, that's all, that's the only question.
Oh, no, Marcell's were great. I mean, they, they came in and talked to us quite a few times on stuff and looked at invoices and things and, so.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
So I would make a motion that we go with Marcel Oil Company for our on-off-road diesel, heating fuel, and Procter Gas for our propane.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, RFP for audit services for fiscal year 22, 23?
So we didn't get any, any proposals in.
Okay.
So, um, Anne has talked to some, some folks at the league and stuff too about maybe a list of auditors that we could send RFPs to directly, so we'd like to try that again and see what happens. I do have a call-in to Sullivan and Powers, just to see if maybe we can have a conversation and see what happens, but, um, I think we're probably gonna just put another RFP out and send it directly to some friends. So.
You're talking about our annual yearly audit.
Yeah.
What about the recommendation in our most recent audit that we have a special audit?
So we're trying to figure out who does the fraud, um, I think that's another thing we got. Actually, Anne and I have a meeting with some folks next Wednesday, so we're gonna see if we can get some, some suggestions on how, who does that work as well. And a lot of the other stuff that was in there, we've done with a lot of the policy stuff, like I said to you guys, and the get one of the names off the, the checking account or the check, this check signing thing, so, um, that's happened, but.
So the, the first deficiency, there's three, right?
Uh, I think there was more than three on that mark.
There's one on the grants receivable and deferred inflows of resources, correct?
Yep.
And then there was one on the segregation of duties, which you said.
So with that one, we took care of when we saw the draft come in.
That is officially off the checking account as of July 1.
Yep.
And there'll be more than two people on that, right?
Us and I will still be.
Okay.
Yep.
So, um, the grants, this, this inflows, that one we gotta address?
So I think it's how the grant, I think it's how the grants are being put in to the, to the, to the budget, because it's showing, I know, we, we go through it every year with and most towns do, when you get your class two paving money, and it shows it as this huge expense, but that doesn't really offset it. I think that's what they mean on this, but I mean, I think that's something we can discuss during budget season too, so.
Well, as long as we're addressing it, 'cause I do think we should address all these deficiencies.
I agree.
And the third deficiency was the recommendation of a was this, warranted staff, warranted staff part. They requested.
There was a list, I think.
Yeah, it was these three are in the back of the audit, that's what it was.
Yeah.
The auditors had recommended in the past changing the, uh, payroll to buy it.
Yep.
Every other week, instead of every week.
Yes.
But we've never done that.
No.
We tried.
We tried, tried. Well, we've been talking about it here recently, but it's.
Well, we voted to do it.
We voted to do it.
We're trying to do it.
We gotta stop.
Well, I do think we have to check.
Two weeks.
Yeah, it didn't work.
I think we should check with that other firm if they have the ability to do that or not. I mean, that was just that one ADP.
Well, I think we'll have to talk about it and another. Later this evening, I think we have to have a conversation.
All right, well, um, but I do think that if that's a recommendation that we've figured out, we should do that, Dave.
Yep. Well, like I said, we're meeting with some folks next Wednesday on something else, and we're gonna bring it up then on who we can find for, to do a lot of on-fraud and what else we can do, so.
Homeless population discussion.
So we've gotten some calls on this, and Alicia and I have talked about it a little bit too.
Yeah, I know. People have reached out to me, wondering if people are going to, now that they're leaving the hotels, gonna end up in the rec camp.
So just for information purposes on here, it's like the executive order and, um, that was, you know, put out by the league, and then the governor's directives on this too. I don't know if we're even gonna have a problem.
I don't, I don't suspect we would, um, but, you know, warranted, I guess, enough of it.
I, I thought it was interesting in this, you know, the one that leaks out on the back page where it says, um, it directs the commissioner of public safety and director of fire safety with input from local boards of health or other municipal officials to inventory currently uninhabited or abandoned housing units, including mobile homes and mobile home lots and county economic centers um, that could be brought back into the housing market, so.
Okay.
We'll see if someone reaches out to us, I guess, but, um.
And we already have an overnight camping ban, right? The whole rec area and all town land?
I'd have to look that up.
I think we do, no?
I don't, you remember that, Helen? I don't.
I don't. No, 'cause we used to camp there, Boy Scouts, we'd camp there.
We used to camp there, yeah.
All right.
I don't think we have enough amenities within walking distance.
I don't suspect that would be the case either, but.
I don't know why. We're just worried about town land. What about people's private land?
Well, that too.
That shouldn't be our problem there though. That should, I mean, that's private landowner thing.
Problem.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just do whatever we want to get rid of.
Do what we ever want.
Well, no, I mean, that's, I mean.
Yeah, I've kicked, I've kicked them off before.
Well, that's a trespass issue, you called it.
Well, they've been in the woods on the side of seven. Get out. You know, you gotta tell them to go.
We had a problem one time over here, out by the haunted house.
That happens occasionally, yeah.
Well. Basically kids, I think it was, but all the time.
I don't know, I was down in Rutland this weekend and it didn't look any different than it had, so I, I don't know what's, you know, maybe it'll sort itself out, but that's really all like, that's all that's being discussed about it right now, so.
Yeah, okay.
Rumor is a lot of those people came from out of state.
They might be going back.
So they may go back where they came from.
Yeah. But just wanted to throw that in front of you folks, that that has been a pretty hot topic lately, and it was discussed at the breakfast on Monday.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So we spent $191 million on this program, $54,000 for hotel owner tax dollars.
Uh-huh, yes.
Think how many tiny homes that could've been.
Well, that could've been done with that.
On state land somewhere, and there you go.
That one hotel owner that owns five rooms is a millionaire now.
Is that in Vermont?
That's Vermont. That's the actual staff that's in the governor's statement.
Yep.
$191 million.
Crazy.
They get an exit check too.
Yeah, I know, like $3,300.
Wow. I don't think many are gonna get that, because.
I know, I think the hotel owners are mostly keeping it.
And most of those hotel owners are gonna say, ah, there's more than $3,300 of them.
Damn it, yeah, oh, yeah.
It won't come back.
Yeah.
But still, that's, that's added on to the $191.
Oh, yeah.
No, I know, it's ridiculous. It's a lot of money.
$54,000. Per room, per year.
I think they were making like $25,000 a night, I think.
$148 a room, per room, per day.
I know, they were letting hotel owners name their price.
It was like $25,000 a night, those hotels were making, I think they figured it out.
All right.
Anyway.
I know. I could complain about that all night, but let's move on.
Let's move on.
Uh, Chittenden police contract.
So that, um, Chief and I redid that with the town of Chittenden a couple of weeks ago. Um, it did increase by about 10% overall, so the.
Plus an added 20, right, for fuel?
Yep, that's on there, and so, but the, the, the pay rate, the salary, I guess we should call it, went up just about 10%, so, um, they were happy with the, they wanted this, the services to continue the way they have been and.
Was that hourly rate also for animal control officer? It looked like it was.
So there's, it's, it is, and we broke, it was broke down in a different hour, so.
Okay.
Yep, it covers, it covers rich and, yeah.
Okay.
So. I don't think they, I don't think they've exceeded or even gotten to like all of the funds this year, so it's, you know, it's good that there's some wiggle room, 'cause I mean, Rich has gotten busy in the last month or so, so.
In Chittenden or here?
Just everywhere, you know, so we'll see if the warm weather brings out more mischievous activity, I guess. Just everywhere, you know, so we'll see if the warm weather brings out more mischievous activity, I guess.
Do we need to vote on that?
It was, chief and I signed it, yeah, so it was just, yeah.
All right. All right, recreation director position?
So unfortunately, Jen has given notice, she's taken a job elsewhere. She said she could stay on until August. I, I did start, um, a job description, and one, I asked her for some input on it, too, and the one thing that she recommended was, there was nothing in it when she took, accepted the position about economic development.
Right.
So we added a little bit of that in there, um, and, you know, I'd like to get the job posting out, like, tomorrow. We have a couple folks that already wanna talk to us, so I guess just trying to figure out how you guys wanna go forward with the hiring process. I mean, I, I think, like, someone from the rec committee and someone from the select board and myself, my, and, and Jen, obviously.
Yeah.
Would be more than enough to do that.
That's great.
Yeah. And just, you guys, just wanna throw that job description in, see if there's anything that, that I've missed out. I mean, that's, I think if Jen's there, and I've got a deadline for June 30th, 'cause it'd be nice to have someone work with her for a few weeks to really, and I think that would be the best.
Absolutely.
So, um, I'm actually meeting with a possible candidate tomorrow to see if they wanna pursue the next step, and I know Jen said that she's, had talked with someone, so once we get the formal process up, you know, it'll be good. So there is some interest. And I think Jen, actually, someone has stepped down from the rec committee, and she'd like to be on it, which I think would be phenomenal, so, you know, 'cause then they'd have her there, too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, we had several that were interested in it, we heard. I don't know if there's any of them that are still available, or was it...
Yeah, we could, you know, put some fillers out for that, but I think if, you know, we get this in sooner than later and get it in the local papers and put it on, on... Yeah, yeah, but it's just nice, like, you know, sometimes word of mouth, you, you find, you know, especially, like, Jen's already, someone to talk to her, who she's like, "I think you'd really like this person."
Right, right.
You know, that goes a long ways, too, so, especially if they're local, again. A lot tonight, haven't opened a lot. So, if, you know, I can, we'll reach out to the, to the rec committee and see who might be interested in doing that, and whoever wants to on the select board, let me know.
Okay, uh, anything on the orders?
We did...
Kelly, did, the, the number was $171,352.56, different than that was on...
So it's 170?
171, 352, 56.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we pulled, yeah, we pulled an invoice out of it. It was a Medicare one that Helen and I both challenged last month, and I was like, "Why is this on here again?" So we're not quite sure, and, um, we're, Helen's on it again. She's gonna crack the whip on some pieces.
So it's just one invoice?
Yeah, yeah, it was the Medicare, something, it was...
CMS one?
C?
This one right here.
Okay.
So any questions on those?
Are there questions on the orders?
Yes, yes.
I had one here. I see the fire department, a bottle of water, $157.62. I'm just wondering, we went through that, clear back when Linda Weeden was on the board, this was many years ago. Why don't they use the town water and have a...
So this is...
Cooler.
This is this kinda water. You don't take a cooler to a fire scene.
So you'll have to buy bottled water instead of having a cooler for people to drink?
Yeah.
Our, our water, the town water, it seems like it's an insult to the people of Pittsburgh.
No, you have to sit, this goes on the trucks with us.
Oh, all right.
And containers.
Well, I can understand that.
Well, it's not what we drink at the station.
I, I thought that...
No, bottled water.
They were, they were, uh, buying bottled water.
That must be for the year?
Instead of drinking, they had bottled water.
We go through a lot of water on fire scene.
Yeah, that's...
They had bottled water here in this office.
Especially lately.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, what, twice a year, you said, roughly?
Roughly, yeah. Depends on how much you use.
It's a different, different situation than what I was, because one time you had bottled water here in this office, and then it was decided, well, we, down at the town garage, they bought a cooler or a fountain, hooked it right into the system.
We have some expired water in cans here, you can more than walk on a half.
How does water expire?
It has an expiration date.
Doesn't it really?
That Anheuser-Busch water, those, have you seen those around?
Just like tires.
It actually does not taste good.
Water, I mean...
That's why it was, that's why it was big water, too.
It tastes to just look at each tire, actually.
We didn't pay for that water.
Bottle after a certain length of time.
If you wanna send those down, we can start signing them.
Oh, I've got a question, bud.
Oh, wait, Dave's got a question.
So there's a bunch of stuff from United Steelworkers, what's that? I've never seen that before.
So, well, so this is interesting, 'cause we were, Anne and I were talking about this, too. It's stuff for, for payroll, and it's, it's the union dues that are, but we're wondering why they're coming out of the gen, like, that. I mean, it's all, it's all relative, but...
It's always been signed up as part of payroll.
Payroll, right.
And Ian came to us and asked us to run all the payroll on the regular order.
So, okay.
So it's just a regular, yeah. So there's, there's actually three payrolls in here, guys, just to let you know.
All right.
And that's everything. Did, uh, did you wanna do liquor? We could do liquor commission, so they're not waiting around.
Yeah, 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 sure. So we'll recess, um, recess the meeting to open up as a liquor board. Oh, and, of course, I lost the paper. All right, so we have, so for Keats and for Hilltop, any information on that?
There's been, been no problems with either of those, right?
So, well, Andy and Erin are the new owners of the Hilltop.
Ah, that's what you're here for, it's very confusing.
Congratulations.
We kept a secret for the whole...
July, right? Mid-July.
All right, all right.
All right.
We have Mays and Brandon right now.
Okay.
Yep, so we're branching out.
Great.
Tell us what your plans are.
This thing is a...
Uh, so to start with, we're gonna do one to nine, um, Wednesday through Sunday. And, uh, hopefully by football season, we'll be able to open up Mondays, um, for Monday Night Football, one to nine. That's the plan. Nothing too crazy. Start small. We're gonna do some food, obviously, beer, wine, liquor.
We have first class now at Mays, and we've had, we, in the past, have had first and third, um, liquor licenses at the last place that we owned.
Great. When you guys get closer to opening, well, we'll work with you. I mean, I, you know how to get ahold of me, but let's, let's talk with economic development stuff, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna, yeah, we have plans for it, and we want it to be, you know, thriving again. I think it's good for the town to have a watering hole.
It's nice to have another place for food, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're planning on adding.
Yeah, great.
Good news.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really like the big part of the branding community, I'm sure Dave can... But, um, we try to stay involved, you know.
Sponsor things, and, and for the rumor mill's sake, Mays is gonna stay the same, and Brandon, we're not closing that, we're not moving. This is additional.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll get questions about that, so...
It's exciting.
It is.
Thank you guys for coming to Pittsburgh.
I know.
Yeah. It was hard to keep a secret without Andy, actually, I was like...
Hi, you have no idea.
Well, this has done him a lot for a while.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion, we approve both of those licenses, all those licenses.
Neither, neither of them have had transfers come in where the property is actually transferred to the new ownership.
So we'll have to do this twice, so we should wait?
Well, you could've...
We can approve it for now.
Process it until the...
Okay.
Well, isn't it open now, still?
Yeah.
But they probably have a current one.
Their licenses got...
Oh, so this is a new one for you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're just hoping to get it going, so we can get everything in place, so we can just actually...
Smooth transition.
If we pre-approve it.
We can, yeah, we can approve it.
So we need to separate them. So I'll make a motion to approve Keats.
Second it.
Okay?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now I'll make a motion to approve the Hilltop, uh, pre-approval of the Hilltop.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
The official name is gonna be The Hilltop Tavern.
Okay. All right.
Great.
All right, we'll come out of liquor board, come back into... Open our regular board, to, I guess, then be done with open meeting. So, all right, well, thank you, everyone.